Thanks Tom. Good morning and welcome to this meeting of the Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue Pension Scheme Board on Thursday the 4th of December. Do we have any apologies?
None received.
And we have somebody online?
Yep, we've got Matt Smart from West Yorkshire Pension Fund and councillor McGonigal joining us online.
Morning to both. So before we begin, are there any declarations of interest that anybody would like to bring to the attention of the board? No? Okay. So the first proper agenda item is the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 11th of September. Now, at this point, everybody's had the opportunity to review those minutes, so is there anything anybody would like to raise from the point of accuracy? No? So reviewing the minutes, there were a few actions to consider. So on the second page of the minutes, which is page four of the pack, there was an action that assurance be provided at the next meeting on proper use and compliance regarding the GAD template used for Matthews, that also the LCC confirmed communications have been sent to those affected by blocked statements, and that LCC provide an update on progress concerning blocked statements at the next meeting. So can you confirm that those are completed?
Yes, that's right. So in terms of the GAD...
Have you got your microphone on, sorry?
Apologies for that. So just to answer those questions, in terms of the GAD template being used, basically all those completing questionnaires are accessing the most up-to-date version of the calculator from the LGA website. So where there are queries on the correct approaches for calculations, this has been raised with West Yorkshire or the AJ LGA Blue Light team for additional guidance. So this can cause delays in processing, however, the team are committed to ensuring the correct figures are provided to members. So the simple answer to the question is yes, but there are some particular caveats within that when perhaps an additional guidance is needed. In terms of the communications being sent around those affected by block statements, the data was provided on the 20th of November 2025, and the communications has been sent to those affected. So in a sense, that is also the update for the later action, which was a progress on block statements. So that's where we are with those.
Brilliant, thanks for that, Tony. Further to that, there are a couple of actions on page six, that LCC prepare communications to staff regarding statement delays with data provided from West Yorkshire Pension Fund, and that West Yorkshire Pension Fund provide necessary data once pay queries are resolved. And that's... Yeah, it's also included in that previous update. The board plan was updated as requested, and the risk register was updated as requested. And that concludes the minutes. Does anybody have anything to raise further to the minutes? No? So the next item on the agenda, as on an annual basis, is to review the terms of reference. Now, we've all had the opportunity to review and consider this, and the only point I would like to bring to the meeting for discussion is whether we need to consider an amendment of point 25, which is around the appointment of a chair, recognising that we've deviated from this on a couple of occasions. Now, is it right that we're deviating, and if so, do we need to consider an amendment to the terms of reference? This is around the limitation of the annual basis. So, for example, this time we've extended the position of the chair for a further year, which seemed naturally quite reasonable. So I think, Tom, you've considered some other similar terms of references, and there may be precedent elsewhere.
Yes, so I guess it's up to the board really to decide whether you want to capture this arrangement, because also previously it was the employer ran for two consecutive years. So it's whether we put in a bit of wording about, like, usually we'll rotating chairmanship or something to that effect.
So from my perspective, I think that flexibility would be beneficial. I don't think there's any significant detriment to giving that flexibility for, say, up to two years. And two years, well, a year is quite a quick period when you only have four meetings. So I would propose that we do introduce that flexibility to the terms of reference formally and look for a consensus. How do we have to vote on it, Tom?
We can have a formal vote, or we can say if that's... Yeah, if anyone dissents from that proposal.
So if we just round the room, if anybody's got any comments?
Just my only comment, just to probably support it, recognising, to ensure that we've got continuity for the board, and if I was being in the role before as being the chair, one year does feel quite limiting. So extending it to two years and just having that with the caveat behind that is in regards to ensuring there is continuity to support the administration of the pension board, I think is the key rationale behind that. So for me, I would support it being extended for two years.
So rather than, for example, saying usually one year, are we going to extend it to two years as the set period? Because that feels quite natural to me, yeah. In that case, I think the consensus is that we'll extend that period to two years with the statement that it's to support continuity of the board. And that's, I think that's something we arrived at by a couple of years, well, several years experience now, and I don't think there's any reason to worry about that position at all. Okay. Brilliant. Thanks for that. Are there any further comments on the terms of reference? No? Okay, with that then, we move on to the next agenda item, which is to receive an update from West Yorkshire Pension Fund on pension administration performance.
Good morning, everyone. Matt Smart here. I don't think I've attended this board before, so I'm not sure what your expectations are, what Helen's update is. So if it's not as you expect, please let me know, and we'll change as we go along. So there's been a few changes at West Yorkshire Pension Fund, let's start there. We have put in place a new team to address the Matthews issues. I'm not sure if there's any queries that are coming out of yourselves at the moment, but we've moved one of our senior managers across. We've brought in a team manager and experienced senior pensions officer from another team within West Yorkshire, and they are currently looking through any unanswered callbacks, emails, et cetera. They're assessing the outstanding work in that team, and they're looking to bring that up to speed and up to date by the end of January. Would have been quicker, but Christmas will give us a bit of a break. And we're recruiting, or we're trying to recruit, further pensions officers to that team with the expected volumes of work, particularly since the latest ruling, we anticipate now an extra 50% of firefighters may be captured in the next step of Matthews. They may now be in scope. So I think that's broadly good news, except that we're a little bit behind the curve, but we are coming up to speed. Secondly, which has enabled that Matthews team to put in place, we've recruited a new member services manager, which is quite a senior role. We have recruited Claudio Tamakaru from, I think we got him from Manchester in the end, he's got a couple of decades of experience working in fire, fire admin and fire payrolls. He's gone straight into the admin team. He's on that role five days per week, and he's sharing two days a week with Laura, who heads up the Matthews team as well. Already, he's into a deep dive to try and assess the issues that we may have when our turnaround times on estimates, and they're not as quick as we would like, and sometimes they don't make their key performance indicator. So we're aware of that, we're looking at that now. We're also looking at any issues that that might have with knock-on effect to actual retirements. I haven't heard of too many, but just now again, there's some of those that are a little bit delayed. And he's looking at some other resourcing areas, areas regarding things like deferred benefits into payment, things like that. So actually, over the last couple of months, we've resourced better, and we are still resourcing. We expect our turnaround times to be quicker and the KPIs to feature much better in future reporting. I'm looking at your current KPIs now. Does Helen usually show these at all? Would you like me to share on the screen?
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, Helen would usually share them on the screen. If not, I'll request them anyway, so yeah, please.
Okay, well, I've got the last three months here. Could you see them on the screen? I know it's the easiest place to see it, Lincolnshire, because I attended personally...
Yes, yeah, we can see them, thank you.
That's excellent, right. Okay, so this is just August, September, and at the bottom, we've got October. Broadly, I think they're a really good story. We hit most of those key performances. As we can see, there was a change of address issue in September, but we would consider that a priority three. It's a blip rather than a concern, there was just a delay in getting that information. Deferred benefits, which I've already mentioned, because of the volumes that are coming in with levers in the fire service, it's a lot of work to actually set up the deferred benefit and send the member their statement of entitlement. What you'll notice from our explanation there is within the statutory two-month period, we write to all the firefighters and say, you have a deferred benefit. Not the values, just a letter to say that there is a benefit deferred. That's perfectly legal and within our statutory obligations, and then we will follow that up at a later date with their statements. It's clearly important to send the statement out, because those values will then be replicated plus pensions increased the following year when we send out the annual benefit statements. As you can see, pension estimates have been mentioned in that month as well, and I've already addressed that with the recruitment and the resourcing in the team. You can see it's repeated again in October, so we know our weaker areas. I missed August, what was in August, and August was a change, and one death in retirement. We've cited volumes of work. It is, but we've reviewed our death process as well. I should point out, that sounds terrible, a death in retirement, you know, benefits were paid late. We do assess them on priority, so if there are partners, widows, et cetera, children, then those are a priority that get paid. And just because we have a key performance for a death doesn't mean to say there is anything to pay, there might not be any partners, might be no beneficiaries whatsoever, no death grants, et cetera, et cetera. So we would re-arse those from a priority to something that just needs to be an admin tidy-up. So nobody has been financially hardship there. So I'll take that off the screen. Any questions on those KPIs? Anything, any concerns?
So, thank you, Matthew. Just to open the discussion a little bit further, so there are KPIs that haven't been met, and broadly, the narrative around the resolution for those is that there's a recruitment strategy in place that's kind of underway.
Yep.
But there are also, if you read through the report, there are other pressures and significant risks, for example, the Matthews calculation still having to be completed manually, the complexity around those, the...
Right, let's...
And then in addition to that, the SQL migration and whatever. So I think to get a picture of direction of travel and understand where the risks are is what I'd like to do from the KPIs, really.
Okay, no, that's absolutely fine. Let's start with, let's just broadly start with our software. It's fair to say that our software provider has been slow to respond to the challenges in the scheme, and we are in constant dialogue with them. Just to give you a flavour of the challenges we face with them, to get everything on board, this is all the correct information to do with remedy, rolling back the records, Matthew, the calculations, processes, just extra screens and data fields, because you'll appreciate we've got more data and different data that's now captured in the calculations. We had 40 drops on our software last year. I think in a normal year, we'd have sort of six to 10. So that shows the level of work that's being undertaken. What I can say is not one of those drops actually worked, and had to either be fixed, resolved, if you like, within West Yorkshire Pension Fund, or sent back to Civica for them to fix it. Now, that sounds terrible, and it really isn't good, but the fixes weren't like the system's broken, or they got the calculations wrong. Sometimes they were simple errors. Their primary platform for their software is SQL. So they build and develop everything in SQL for all their other clients, and because of where their oldest client in local government, they then convert it back into Oracle code. And they made some significant errors in that coding, which we had to point out to them, and then they had to correct. And it would be as simple as putting one line of coding twice. And of course, that would mean that the whole process and calculation would fall over. And that was part of the problem that we have with rollback. Rollback itself probably took us nearly three months to implement, because every step of the way, and there are five steps in the rollback process, six if we include removing the last year's data and then putting it back on, had to be returned to Civica, just because there were some, you know, issues that stopped it working. So that's sort of where we are in the last sort of 12 to 18 months. We have those drops now, and we have now moved over to this new platform, SQL. So the coding issues should now go away. We only did this last weekend, so we are in the process. We tested everything, and we're now in the process of testing everything in life. There's been a few wrinkles, as you would expect, on such a large shift from the way that our platforms work. But nothing, at the moment, I see as stopping business as usual. Our calculations are working okay, we're dropping the new letters in, so payments, retirement estimates should now carry on as normal. And with the additional resourcing, I would expect those over the coming month or so to really get up to speed. My biggest concern, and it is a priority one for West Yorkshire Pension Fund, is as we moved from Oracle to SQL, we knew we were losing the capability to rollback and produce an RSS. Now, this is quite a concern of mine, because we still need to get some of the statements out the door, and I'll come to those in a moment. So I did flag this, I did communicate this to all our clients probably two to three months ago now, to say there will be a hiatus possibly until December, end of December, New Year. That does seem to be the case. I've had an assurance that we could have it up and running in about two weeks' time, but I've not seen anything to support that, that was just part of the conversation. So I will be, I will be on that with the head of IT and the assistant director. What this means to us with regards, not to the KPIs and business as usual, but with our capability to produce the RSSs, is we have managed this year to get all the ABS RSSs and the Yalt's ABSSs out of the door on time for most of our members. There's usually a justifiable reason, if there isn't, I think we're about 93% across all our clients' success rates, so we feel this is an abbreachable situation for the TPR to be reported, but that's down to you as scheme managers if you feel that your personal local delivery was not good as expected or whatever. What we have got left to do are the rest of the IC RSSs, so our pensioner members, and the deferred benefit RSSs. Now, back in the summer, the plan was to go for the ABS to the DBS to the IC, because we did have some capability within the system to produce bulk statements. Because of the amount of queries that will be being raised, and obviously some of our retired members are getting older, some of them obviously retire on the grounds of ill health, we decided to process as many of those as possible. Now, what that has meant is we've had to defer producing the deferred benefit statements. As soon as we have capability back for RSS and rollback, we will get those out of the door. Largely, no harm, no foul, these people aren't retired yet, there's no benefit values on it, there's, we should be able to do these in good time now, looking towards a new year. Those that are reaching retirement age, contact us through the normal channels, we will provide the figures, and retirement will be paid, even if we have to do manual calculations. The, we have to go through an exercise and provide every pensioner member in scope with an RSS. Now, some of these are protected, so we kind of think this is a paper exercise, you know, 99.9% of these people are not going to change their benefits, they are not going to make an election. So on that basis, they will be going out, once we've got the bulk calculation and the RSS capability sometime in the new year as well. Where that leaves us is originally with about 450 of what is called the green and the red cases. These are manual calculations, they have some significant complexity in their calculations, and some guidance had been delayed or was not clear, and clarity was sought. So these could include anyone with additional annual allowance liabilities, it could include members with transfers in from other schemes, and it could include those that have had divorces. All of those calculations with remedy, and there are others as well, would need to be recalculated before we then do the rollback. So I have a team of, well, my senior managers, like Helen, really do these manually. We have trained a handful of additional pension officers, and it is a handful, because they are quite complex and you do need the experience on the fire scheme. We couldn't just employ someone and train them on these, they wouldn't understand the data they're looking for. Essentially, we have to build the file, build the calculation, redo all calculations that went before, rollback and calculate to produce an RSS. And I know this probably is of interest to yourselves or your firefighters, but to say, from quote to payment, could be anywhere between five to six hours per calculation. It's a resource issue. So we have got about 100 of those, maybe a bit more, out of the door. I have rolled forward in those additional people, so we're paying overtime, that's not affecting the costs on your contract with us, and we're trying to move those out of the door on a weekly basis, as many as possible. There is an outside chance that once SQL has been developed, or sorry, delivered, the rollback and the bulk RSS calculations, that they would assist part of that process for these red cases. I'm not, I suppose there's a further outside chance that we might be able to do these through the system in the new year, but I feel it will be, we'll calculate it manually and be able to at least check in part using the system calculations. In other words, we can run it, and then we can cross-check at certain parts of the process, which will save us a couple of three hours. So we do need to provide another update on SQL, and that's with my head of IT, but I feel come the new year, once we have that capability, the bulk statements will be produced. Our resourcing will mean we'll back up to speed on the estimates and retirement actuals and the deferreds, so the only thing that we would still be manually resourcing will be these 400, less what we've done already, IC cases that are complex. Now, you've all been very quiet, there's been no hands up anywhere. Does that make sense? And have I provided enough assurance that we are working towards removing some of these challenges?
Yeah, thanks, Matthew. Got a hand up from Mark Baxter.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Yeah, very comprehensive explanation in regards to where your challenges are and things that you're putting in place. I suppose my comment and observation is, notwithstanding all of the hard work that the teams are putting in place, there is still a frustration and a risk in regards to some of our members that they haven't received their annual statements. There are some members are not aware of any annual breaches that they usually get on a, on a year-by-year basis. And I suppose what I'm hearing is, I know there's some work that's being done to try and to resolve this, but when it's coming down to individuals that are having to do their self-assessment tax returns, and the requirement to have it done by the 31st of December to give them the option on how they pay, we need that data by then. And then the final cutoff date for doing self-assessment tax returns is the end of January. So the concern is that individuals are being left in limbo due to, and I'll probably be quite blunderberried on situations that are out of their control, because the information isn't being provided. So that is putting, that is a concern for some of our members. And then the other element in regards to the estimates that's coming through, and I know you're saying that there's a high demand and a high volume, but in regards to Lincolnshire, it doesn't seem to be, there is a significant high demand. There's four pension estimates that has been in the last three months, and there's a, there is a 10-day target, but it feels like, just because of the resourcing issues, that KPI is being discounted, because the statement here says that because of the high volumes, it's going to take between eight and 10 weeks. Now, bear in mind, there's many of our contracts have a one-month or a three-month notice period. This isn't giving some of our members sufficient time to make key decisions in regards to their retirement date. So I think it's just right that as a board, we do outlier these concerns that are having tangible impacts in regards to our members. And I suppose from, it's great that your update in regards to the amount of resources being committed to it, but for me, my concern is that still doesn't seem to address the upcoming tight timelines of 31st of December and the end of January, particularly in regards to individual some taxations.
Okay, and I get both points. I'll address the estimates first, because that's largely easier. I mean, there are often with the estimates further mitigating issues, and often to do with data. And I know we do have some ongoing concerns on both sides of defence here on the quality of data and the speed of return or getting that information. So I think that would probably add to the complexity with Lincolnshire. Having said that, I take on your point that your concern for those few estimates that you've got, and when I address the issue, I look at it as 24 clients and a bulk. So I think that, you know, aside from getting data to us quicker and getting the data accurate first time, I'm not against, you know, if you've got somebody that's getting towards, you know, a frustrated period, they've been waiting too long, just let us know, and we can see where that is sitting in the process, you know, and where are we likely to get it. And I know I'm not sort of suggesting we'll just, every time someone calls us and challenges, we'll put that record to the top of the pile, because clearly we couldn't put every record to the top of the pile. We would give it further consideration and its priority, and there might be some extenuating circumstances. So I will feed your concerns on the estimates back to Claudio and the team, and he can take those into account when he's reviewing how this challenge is met, and he is looking at that now. Okay, so hopefully that gives you a bit of reassurance, as I said, that if there are some personal issues on these, you know, personal, but you know the records, you know, give us a call, and just alert us to the fact, and we'll see if it is, where they are in the process. As for annual allowance, okay, it's, you're right, it's complex and it's worrying, no one really understands the taxation of pensions these days. To the best of my knowledge, we've already, those that we are aware were in breach this year, have had their statement produced and it's gone, because it had to go by the 6th of October. With regards to things like remedy, there is an extended period for a member to have to make a claim. And I think it's been communicated, but certainly, you know, where we haven't got the data, or the data seems to be wrong, and this happens quite frequently across all our clients, that extends the period, and I believe the tax returns not due until six months after the information is provided. I will check with Helen where we are at the moment, because as I said, I was aware that anyone that we knew had breached, whether there's a tax charge or not, had received their pension savings statement in October, and those that are coming out of remedy are receiving their RPSS. And if you'd like to know the difference, the pension savings statement is annual, the RPSS is for the period of remedy, because people's taxation may change with an election for increased benefits. And they're the ones that I said have got an extended period for them. But I'll check with Helen just to see if there are any members that are captured by either of those four you, but I'm fairly confident that the annual ones, they should have had them by now. Does that help at all?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you for looking into that, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Matthew. Give us an extensive update around those key KPIs and the issues affecting them, just to kind of say, we do sympathise, it's obviously a very complex job that you do and challenging to recruit in your particular field. So, yeah, we do sympathise, and it's a situation we'll continue to monitor as a board in subsequent meetings, I know it's represented in our risk register. Just a couple of specific questions then, given the complexity of these calculations, and where, particularly where manual work is required, could you succinctly describe the risk controls that are in place to ensure accuracy?
It's check, recheck and check again, essentially. So we'll have one person... So we'll have one person will produce the first set of figures, maybe Helen. We know she's very good. In my mind, she's one of the two best people in the country with her knowledge. She will check. I'll have another senior, sorry, she will calculate. I'll have another senior manager do the initial checking. And we will then produce the RSS which gets checked again. So we're checking the figures, then we're checking the figures in a document. That goes out, we get the election that comes back. It goes to someone else. They will check what has been returned, all the figures prepped and ready for payment. And they will produce the letters to go back to the member to say, we are paying you. It will then go to the payroll team for payment and someone will look at those figures. They won't be looking at the document. They probably won't know what they mean, but they can check those figures back to the original quote. It is, but that's why it takes us so long. I mean, the original quote that Helen will produce has 23 individual tabs of financial and personal data on there. And that's half that we've done all the recalculations for divorces and transfers and stuff. So, and again, I know that's my problem, not yours. But so at every step of the way, we check it. And of course, if legislation changes, if we've misunderstood a regulation, we've always got our ears to the ground. There's always the option that if a mistake is made, then a recalculation can be put in place and adjustments made to the pension. I'm not aware of any, by the way, but our door is open for that because we just want to pay the right pension to the member and we want to pay it at the right time. As we move into our systems, our systems will obviously have all those fail safes embedded in the process. But there will still be an officer cheque at the end of that process before payment is made. And it will be a senior officer, at the very least, a senior pension officer, who has enough knowledge of each calculation. But we can update you on that as we get to that point where our calculations are more system-based than manual. Does that help give you assurance? I mean, it's just manual checking really and it's senior members of staff that do this.
No, thank you. I think that's about all you can do to reassure us really. And there's an answer there which is enough for the moment. Just the next point, to kind of generally sum up the theme of what you've discussed. There are software issues certainly historically, although the move from Oracle to SQL is likely to be a positive one. There was one particular priority, one concern described around the ability to produce rollback statements. So I'm going to propose that we keep that in mind as we reach the risk register to ensure that it's properly represented in our risk register. And then I almost missed it. There was something that you considered reporting, but deemed it not to be reportable, a breach of some kind. And it was down to scheme managers to consider that. So I'd like to just confirm that and then capture that as an action for this board to consider opposition by the next board meeting.
Yeah. Would you like me to re-explain that or have you got that?
Yes, please.
Right, okay. So this is about the annual benefit statements. They should have been delivered on the 31st of August. Now, the principle behind it is everybody that's due a statement gets the statement. That's 100% of scheme members. And that's where it lies. That's the current value as of the 31st of March. Because of some of the issues that we have faced, not 100% went out. If I'm absolutely honest with every single client, I would argue with everybody, including authority bodies, that it's impossible to do 100% every year, any year, because there's always outstanding work. If we're, say, waiting for a transfer to come in, we won't send a statement out because it won't have the transfer value. So that would get blocked. The transfer work would be completed and then the statement would be issued at a later date. And everybody in a normal year seems quite fine about that. So we've got those issues, but also we've got issues where we've had some data, hasn't been quite right on the record, we weren't able to roll back. So instead of getting 100% of everybody's annual benefit statements out, we hit about 93%. Okay, that was across the board. We felt that that was acceptable under the current circumstance. And therefore we recorded that as a breach on our register, but on a material breach. So therefore we didn't report ourselves to the pensions regulator. The point that I'm making is you are the scheme manager. You could be perfectly satisfied with my explanation and the numbers we get out the door. You might consider that it should be nearer 100% every year irrespective of the world that we're living in with remedy and Matthews, et cetera. And that's absolutely right. So I would say to every fire pension board like yourselves, the annual benefit statements should be on your breach register and you may well want to record those as a breach. And it's then your determination of whether you think that breach is significant enough to be material. And if you do feel that it's material, then you should alert the TPR. And if you do do that, I'd be grateful to copy because then I can put that on your record. We do know, just moving on slightly, that we didn't deliver the deferred benefit statements because of rollback, we've still got to do those. We didn't do that by the 31st of August. We did alert the TPR that this was a material breach in our opinion. And we shared a copy of that with all of our clients like yourself. So we know we didn't deliver. It was a very easy decision to make. So we got here two decisions, one very easy, nothing that went out the door, it's a material breach. 93% went out the door, a breach, but is it material? Over to you to decide. Does that make sense? Is that clear now?
It is, thank you. So I think I'm understanding it right. And what I would propose for this board to do is to have an action following this meeting for the scheme manager to consider the extent of the impact to Lincolnshire on the annual benefit statements provision. And to add an agenda point for the next meeting to consider a position on whether we believe this to be a material breach and as such needs to be reported to the pensions regulator. Does everybody agree with that as a course of action? Right, thank you. So does anybody else have any questions around that first section of the performance data? Because we only have considered the first section of the performance data. So Matthew, if you're able to continue that report, if possible, please.
I'm a little bit blind as to what else you would usually have. Apologies there. Is there something else that Helen delivers?
So normally we'd skim through the most recent report we'd been provided. So we're looking at the October report, I believe. And she would generally skim through the rest of the report and point out any key issues. If not, I can possibly direct you to a couple of issues if that's.
Yeah, I just looked at the KPIs up to October. Apologies there. I wasn't aware. But if you want to highlight something, then I can respond.
Yeah, well, a couple of things. I think we may have already hit on them a little bit. But so on page 12 of the report, there's a discussion around the IC RSS processing without really a timeline for resolution on those high priority cases. Is that anything you can give any reassurance on in addition to what you've already said?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a really relevant point and one that's being raised to me quite often. So there's two things here. So the easy one is the bulk calculations on the ICs and the DB RSSs. We do need that capability within our software. Once we get that, you know, it will take us weeks, weeks, weeks to get there and it will take days to send the statements out. So and for the large part, as we said earlier, there's not benefits into payment and there's not going to be a huge amount of elections off the back of it. So it's quite a quiet cohort, equally important, but I think that they'll get done on bulk in the new year. So we're left with those 400 calculations on the IC RSSs and those eight people and those experienced members of staff producing calculations anywhere between, you know, four and six hours per calculation. I'm trying to get about 10 or more out of the door at the moment. Now, if I'm doing that per week, we're still looking at significant time to clear those. We've done about 100 of the 450 that we had, but it's just going to be significant. We're trying to focus on those that are most at risk, those people that were ill health retirements, those people that might now be ill in retirement, those people that might be older and we should be paying their benefits sooner. That doesn't keep all our scheme members happy. I understand that because the most important thing is their pension, not their former colleague. And some FRAs are more demanding than others and want their work, all their work completed. And clearly we can't do that because we don't favour, we try and do a few calcs for each FRA and then move on to the next FRA and then come back and start again. And in a normal world, that seems to be the acceptable way and I think you're happy with that. So as we sit here at the moment, 10 a week is achievable, assuming people want to do the overtime. Remember, it's voluntary. I can't force them. We are going to have a bit of a hiatus over Christmas because people are going to take leave, spend time with their family and quite right. And we'll pick it up again in January. We are testing a bulk calculation that might work, but because I said of the complexities where there's other calculations involved with these, like divorce, transfers, that sort of thing, tax issues, particularly if there is, you know, a couple of AA breaches or even two payments of benefits in the period because they've had more than one record, the calculation won't do it all. So we could check part of it automated and then it's back to manual. So we could probably shave a couple of hours off of each process. But by doing that, there will be a few more out the door. And that's about the best I can say at the moment. We are looking at future planning. I've got plans from the leads in the team areas. This is why I'm working with Helen. We're even having some discussions with LGA around future planning and hopefully getting their support on our next steps to get these out the door. But I would say without any kind of software support on these manual calculations, we could be looking towards the end of March and maybe beyond. And I know you want a date and that's not reassuring enough, but I'm just hoping you understand that relying on overtime, manual calculations is not ideal when we want to put a deadline on it, get this done and out the door. But as I said earlier, in the new year, if all the bulk calculations do the rest of the stuff, the one thing that we will be left with will be these IC calculations and there will be a lesser number. But we will be publishing a plan at some point in the new year and hopefully, as I said, we'll have the support of the LGA with that plan. Is that enough for the moment?
I think that's about all we can expect for the moment, but I think we need to capture that there is concern from the board around that position in that there's no certainty really.
I fully understand that. I really do. It's just without the software support, I can't sort of say, well, by next week, we'll be able to do all those 400 IC calculations. It is manual and I'm relying on staff in overtime to do it. They've been really good the last month. We had 40 that were calculated and need checking and we got those out in the last month. So that's where I'm getting the yardstick of about 10 a week and there's about between 300 and 350 to get out. And as we do more of them, the quicker we will get. But I will come back with that plan in the new year with LGA support.
Thank you, Mark. Did you have a query?
Yeah, and forgive me, I should have probably picked this prior to the board meeting. But embedded within the performance report provided by yourselves, there is a PDF breach report for Lincolnshire Fire DBS, but unfortunately it's not accessible on our report. Is there an opportunity for that to be sent separately so we can see that? That'd be great, thank you.
I'll get that over to you this afternoon. No problems whatsoever. Yeah, if you ever get any documents or anything from us that you can't open, just shout and we'll send it a different way. Leave that one with me.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Okay, so I'd just like to dwell on the October report a little bit longer, apologies. But there's a positive in there that the web memberships seem to be increasing steadily while the scheme membership remains steady. So proportionally, that's a positive trend. Where actions are noted in the report, I'd just like to quickly review those and see if any of those need to be recorded as actions for our scheme managers. So on page 12, we've got an action for scheme managers to ensure staff processing Matthews cases are familiar with the manual case notes and so on. Could, is that something we could take away from this meeting and report back on? So Tom, if we could record that as an action, it's from page 12 of the October report for the scheme managers to ensure staff processing Matthews cases are familiar with the manual case notes. There are further actions. So page 20, if you just check if that's relevant or not, this is page 20 of the October report. So scheme managers should ensure the necessary people are made aware of the updated template and guidance. This is around the age discrimination remedy. Again, is that something we can report back on? So I'm looking at page 42 of the pack here. There's an action in red there. So we'll capture that one, please, Tom. So page 42 of the pack, there's an action in red there. Scheme managers should ensure the necessary people are made aware of the updated template and guidance. On the next page, 43, we've got, that's an action for West Yorkshire. That's around the breach, isn't it? We've captured that one.
I see, I found the pack now. So I'm on that page. There's dashboard note there. Would you like an update where we are with the pension dashboard?
What's the appetite for that? It's quite a complex subject that's not really affecting our members at the moment. So I think we can skim over that one.
Okay.
And then there's an action for scheme managers there are encouraged to allow their employees to attend relevant training on offer. So this is training that's offered by, who, sorry? Do we know?
That's from the blue light. So that's from LGA.
Okay. So it's fairly generic, but we'll capture that action anyway. Right, brilliant. Okay. So we can report back on the next meeting. Did you capture that one, Tom? Page 43 for the scheme managers. Okay, right. I'm happy then to move on to the next agenda item unless anybody's got anything to add. So the next agenda item is for an update on current issues from Tony Cavanagh.
Thank you, Chuck. So I'll just go through the usual issues that we normally have, which is around IDRP, cases, breaches, Sergeant, McLeod, Matthews, et cetera, and the pensions dashboard. So in terms of internal dispute resolution, we've had no further records of that. So that is good. But we have had one breach since the last pension board relating to a delayed production of deferred benefit statements, remedial service statements. And they've both been reported to the TPR by West Yorkshire and LFR. In terms of the ABS and RSS production update, I know we've talked about this already, but in terms of each of the particular categories, we know obviously that West Yorkshire have issued their ABS and RSS for 23, 24 this year, obviously with some caveats, which is around obviously certain specific issues associated. In terms of active members, there are still 24 active members yet to receive their statements for 24, 25. And again, there are particular reasons why that is, as referenced by Matthew then before, like Intepure grade transfers, those sorts of things which are the reasons why they've not gone. Deferred members, so the production of the deferred member benefit statements began in October this year. These are currently being running for those out of scope of McLeod and Sergeant. So rollback continues and it's expected these will be issued by the end of March next year. But there's still a statute requirement to produce some of the statements for 24 and now 25. But clearly whilst work is transferred into the production of 25 statements, plans are in place to return to production of deferred annual benefit statements for 24, followed then by deferred benefit statements for 25. In terms of pension members, it's not expected that pension cases will be able to receive the ABS and RSS for 24 or 25 until the end of the for 24 or 25 until the end of this month. And where possible, these will be rolled back into the correct legacy schemes with the deferred members. And then obviously upon receipt of that, individuals can then opt to take a refund or pay the additional contributions based on a choice between legacy and reformed pension schemes. So in terms of, um, Sergeant McLeod age discrimination remedy, obviously we've covered this on a, a lot of occasions in, in the past, the numbers haven't radically changed. So we know we had around 473 in scope. Um, in, of, of Sergeant and of those 186 are also in scope of second choice. Um, so as we know, at the moment, individuals get two sets of figures, one for legacy and another for reformed. Um, and they have a choice of which one is best. Uh, and then obviously the Matthews election has to be made before West Yorkshire can calculate and provide the retirement benefits. So since first of October 23, when the legislation was introduced, we've had 26 retirements completed. 18 have chosen legacy, four have chosen reform and four have, uh, and four have decided not to take the benefits. We currently have 13 retirements ongoing and 12 of, and of those 13, 12 are Matthew cases as well. Um, in terms of Matthews itself and the second options exercise, uh, again, the figures haven't really changed. Um, of the 723 that are in scope, 404 have indicated they wish to receive costs of the buyback. And 25 individuals have indicated they do not wish to receive the cost of buyback. So we are still waiting for another 294 individuals to respond. Obviously we do that in conjunction with colleagues from the Fiber Grades Union, uh, as well as former colleagues to try and engage those individuals to, uh, to come along and join the party, so to speak. Um, but we've not, uh, obviously there's still somewhere in the region of a significant number that haven't, haven't responded. Um, and so priority continues to be on processing special pension members and active members who are retiring with immediate eligibility for, for, for pension payments. Um, so that's where we are with, with that. Um, just on the issue of pensions dashboards, um, there's been a delay on that, uh, which I think everybody is aware of. Um, so that was due to take place by the end of October. That's been delayed because of the capacity of the dashboard provider. Um, so they're still scheduled to take place with testing and so on, so I don't think that's going to be an immediate update, uh, unless Matthew's got anything further to add on that, but I think that's pretty much where we are. Um, and there's been no issues with re-pensions, automatic enrolment. So I'll stop there.
Thanks, Tony. Does anybody have any questions for Tony regarding his report? No, okay. So I, I think the only point I would raise is that, um, there was mention of, uh, either a refund or repayment of contributions. And I would reinforce to any member the importance of, uh, receiving qualified financial advice before, uh, accepting any, um, refund in particular. But, and then I would also, um, from personal experience, suggest there is a difficulty, uh, receiving qualified financial advice that understands our pension scheme effectively. So it's an interesting point for discussion in the future perhaps. Thank you then. So next point on the agenda is to review the fire pension board plan. So the three components of this are the forward plan. Uh, we've got four lines open on that, so. Um, annual benefit statements, we've discussed at length, should have been completed by August 25. We know our position on those. Uh, and we are considering those at the next meeting as to whether there's any actions to be taken in terms of reporting. The annual scheme return to pensions regulator deadline is November 25. Uh, so that's West Yorkshire Pension Fund. Can we confirm that that is in progress or complete? Completed, okay. The TPR Public Service Governance and Administration Survey, obviously deadline, we're working towards January, so that is presumably underway. And the year-end return to the Home Office, um, April 26. Obviously the responsibility, the LCC finance team. Now, this is something we discussed previously about having a finance representative at this board meeting. Um, we're still without one since Naomi left us, so I think, I don't know where we can apply pressure to get that representation, but Tony?
Yeah, um, obviously with, uh, there, we can have further discussions with the scheme manager ar- around that. Um, but I will, I will pick it up. I think, um, with the scheme manager now, uh, becoming the chief executive, uh, there will be some discussions about who becomes scheme manager going forward. Um, and I think whoever that is, I think we need to take on that responsibility to ensure we do have finance here. That said, I do, and like everybody who's working within, whether it's WYPF or within LCC, we do know finance are under a tremendous amount of, um, strain in terms of workloads and everything else. But I would agree that we do need a representative here. And I'll, I'll pick that up.
Just to confirm, regardless of what you said about the strains they're under, we have no concern about the year-end return completion by April?
Not as far as I'm aware, no, no concerns.
Thank you. So, um, the training records, I don't believe there's been any, uh, significant change or update since last time. Um, but details have been provided to new board members of, uh, online training, which is available from the local government association. So to the risk register, now we had a thorough look at this at the last meeting, so I don't think we need to pick it through in line by line detail. But I think the discussion I would like to have is whether we think that the issues that have been raised by the, the West Yorkshire Performance Report are adequately represented in this risk register, specifically around the software, the lack of skilled resources, um, and, uh, the complexity of the issues that they're dealing with. So this would sit, uh, in potentially a number of different points in the risk register. So, uh, for example, um, lack of skilled resources, uh, in West Yorkshire Pension Fund in particular. Now, we've, we've considered that in the past and considered it to be a, a moderate risk. Do we feel that position's adequate?
Um, yeah, I, I think for me, uh, recognize how our risk register is built. Um, and for, for me, I think it is focusing on A4, which is about the source, and I think the source of the risk is about resourcing um, across the board, uh, in my view. Um, I think what is recognised is in this, and is a, a resourcing for LCC and, uh, West Yorkshire Pension Fund. And when, when we're looking at the, uh, the, uh, controls and contingencies, um, I think, I feel that needs to be updated. I think we have, uh, we've recruited within LCC uh, in regards to providing, uh, some of that support. I mean, Tracy being, uh, being here and supporting us quite well. I think this, um, stating that the recruit for the additional support with West Yorkshire is still, is still ongoing. So I think that's still, uh, quite relevant. Um, and, and I think the, the element which is following the re- uh, retirement and long-term sickness of skilled resources, I think that probably needs to be, um, taken out there because I think that's a historic, uh, historic issue that's been resolved. With all said and done, I think my personal review is I think the residual risk, um, being left at a four still feels at the moment relatively low until those skilled resources have been put in place to actually impact on the change that it is wanting to. So, um, I, I think the impact for me is, is more of a, a two and a three. Um, at the moment, that's how it feels because I think of the timelines. With, with, I, I feel the confidence from the updates that are being given, that by next board, that will probably drop back down again. But for my, my view as a, a board member is at the moment, I think there's still a, um, a, a higher residual risk at this moment in time because of the timing of, of, of the statements not coming out.
Uh, any further points on that discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I'd, I'd agree with that, um, in terms of, of, of what Mark has said. Um, I think obviously this, I don't think anything has fundamentally changed in terms of the risk overall. Obviously, West Yorkshire under tremendous pressure as are, as, as is the team within, uh, LCC. Um, I think we are aware obviously and, um, I'm conscious I don't sort of speak out of turn, but I, I think it's fairly public knowledge that the LGA did write to West Yorkshire Pension Fund to stress, um, concerns about progress, I guess, with, with some of the work. Um, so, but I think whilst that in itself is a, is a, is a challenge for West Yorkshire, I think it does demonstrate the national issues that the whole of fire authorities, whether they're represented by West Yorkshire or not, are going through. So I don't think that mitigates the risk, but I think it does demonstrate that this is a, a widely accepted challenging position which lots of fire authorities, uh, are, are struggling with, and West Yorkshire and other providers are struggling with. So I think in terms of, um, we, in terms of internally, um, I don't think, obviously we have, we have the benefit of Tracy and Tracy and her team's support, which is, which is great. Um, obviously Tracy wears numbers of hats, um, not just fire, but, um, but it has, it has been invaluable. I think, um, there's still a discussion, I think, to be had about whether, because this, this isn't going to end anytime soon, whether, um, we need to consider other options around, uh, resourcing. Um, thinking of things in, in a different way, which I won't propose to do today. I think there's still an outstanding meeting with myself, uh, Mark as, as chief fire officer and whether it's Debbie or, or Andrew as chief executive that, that we need to talk it, talk it through. But, um, I think there's still a lots of single points of failure, I think, technically within, within the organisation around resourcing, which if one person was unfortunate to go off thick or something like that, then has a, that in itself has a damaging effect on the whole service. So I think there's further work to be done and so I, I, I think keep it as is, yeah.
No, just, I, I, I think that's, um, I think that's, that's a really good reflection and I think I'll probably offer in regards to controls and contingencies. Rather than it was stating that we was recruiting to a dedicated pension support, that we need to review the sustainability of the resource support for, um, um, from LCC for, for fire pensions. So, so I think that wraps it up into that conversation. It is about the sustainability of it.
Yeah, absolutely happy to take that, um, revision of that. So is, uh, this is risk A4. So we're going to revise the controls and contingencies to remove recruiting a dedicated pension support within LCC and replace that with, uh, reviewing the support within LCC for, um,
I think about the sustainability, I think that's a key of it.
Yeah. And then also to remove the temporary resources made available following retirement, long-term sickness of skilled resources. Uh, I think that gets bundled into that review in general, doesn't it? So I, I think we'll expect some kind of report back at the next meeting on, on what's being considered and what might be available as an option. And then I think everyone's in agreement that we're certainly not going to downgrade this risk and it's reasonable to, uh, adjust it from a potential of two and impacted two up to a potential of two and impact of three. So give a residual risk of six.
I, I, I think for me, I mean, I, I offer that and, um, and because I think it's, it's right that we do reflect probably what the position is. And, and again, I think with the, the knowledge of all expectations is probably by the next pension boards and we will probably may have a clearer picture and it will be, um, in, in going back down to a four. But I think, um, for me, it does feel, um, appropriate to just to, to recognise that. And, and I think as Tony's saying is, uh, it's reflecting the fact that this is just an, an isolated linking result. I think this is, this is reflecting the national pressures that's being outlined.
Okay, right, I'm happy with that then and I'm happy to call out the risk register reviewed. So if we return to the agenda, um, point eight is to receive an update from, a report from Tony on the fire pension schemes bulletin.
Thank you. Um, I'm sure everybody looks forward to this moment. Um, so, uh, in terms of, uh, obviously there's a, there's a couple there that were, 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 I think, covered, uh, in the previous, um, update. Um, namely 96 and what, I can't recall from 97, but clearly there's been the bulletin 97, which was around different versions of the Matthews calculator. Uh, and that GAD had disabled the use of calculators for pension member cases, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and also some more, uh, updates around, uh, guidance for fire, fire authorities with respect to contingent decisions and such like, and as well around the pensions regulator uh, on their enforcement strategy. Um, more recently, we've got FPS bulletin 98, which has updated guidance on how to report to HMRC. Uh, in terms of any offsetting for unauthorized payment top-ups. And there's been an updated list of Matthew's cases that need to be referred to Government Actuaries Department for calculation. Uh, and that's, and that's been, been released as well. So, um, pensions regulators also sent some scheme return notices to managers of public service pension schemes for completion and return within the six weeks. So, uh, that's where we are with that one.
Thanks, Tony. And you will see that, uh, any questions at all on that note? You'll see the next agenda point again is back to you for an update on the fire pension officer.
Yep, thank you for that. So there was, um, an update, uh, from the North East Region Fire Pension Officers, which took place on the 10th of September, which really just flagged around, uh, number of FRAs around financial detriment, links to the delays and how we address the gaps in pensions history. Uh, and then the development of a Matthews compensation scheme. Uh, there was then the West Yorkshire and Fire Clients Meeting on the 15th of October. Uh, we've already talked about, um, ABS RSS, uh, and Matthew's referenced about system updates as well. And also Matthew's also referred, Matthew has also referred Matthews specific team, um, about being established from, from October and, and Matthew's given us an update on that. So, um, I don't think there's anything in there, anything else to update on that specifically jumps out, so I'll, I'll leave that there.
Thanks, Tony. Um, so Matthew, on the agenda, we would normally receive, uh, an update from Helen on the Scheme Advisory Board. Uh, I don't know whether you've read anything or whether you're aware of anything. Um, but don't worry too much if not.
No, apologies. Um, that, that is Helen, she's, she's, she's part of the, the, the advisors to the board. Uh, I believe they meet next week. Uh, so I think it's possible. There's no update since, since she last delivered to this board. Uh, we have, we feed into that, we give them an update of where we are, which is much like I've discussed with you today. Uh, but the meeting's on the 11th, so I expect Helen then to update all clients, um, uh, over the next boards in the new year. I hope that's okay.
Uh, that's perfectly fine. And actually, I think, uh, in my time as chair, I found that the Scheme Advisory Board have become much more engaged with the, um, pensions boards and we receive regular, uh, updates by letter from Joanne Livingston, Chair of the Pension, uh, Scheme Advisory Board. The last one was on the first of October. I don't know if everybody receives these. I, I do. I could probably forward them on if not. So yeah, that's, that's fine. Thanks for that, Matthew. Um, and with that then, that's the end of the meeting. Uh, the next meeting is scheduled for the 5th of March, 2026. So thanks to everybody for joining us in person and online. Thank you.
Very much. Thanks, Bill.